Okay, so we're gonna restart up again in five minutes and eight after our public hearing for Comcast and we're gonna finish up with our highway supervisor, Rennie Carroll. So where were we?
I think I was talking with Kathy.
Yeah. Rennie, so honest. He said without a smile, notice.
No, I'm smiling.
No, I appreciate you explaining a lot, just that 240,000 is a very high compared to the prices we've paid in the past.
So let's go, let's go right to that. So in 2006, we spent about 85,000 on a six-wheeler, okay?
Okay, wait, I'm gonna turn it off.
That was the, the one we're talking about replacing.
Oh, the, the...
So the...
The one that has 120,000 miles?
No, 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 it has 36,000. The big dump truck that you were, because you were talking about the big number, 240,000.
Yeah, I'm looking at that number, but I'm looking at what we're...
It's two down from the 120,000, so the Peterbilt 335 dump.
We spent 85,000 for the...
Correct, so in 2015, the Peterbilt that we bought was $168,000 and that was without plows, without a sander. So you can add about 12,000 for a sander and maybe another seven or eight thousand for each plow.
So how come that truck went up so much in price as compared to the first truck that we spoke about? You know, like, you know what I'm saying?
They're two different animals.
Yeah.
The two, one truck is a huge truck and one truck's a smaller truck.
Talking about a truck that, that carries...
It's the size and the GVW of the vehicle, it's just a much heavier duty truck.
This is a really...
We're talking a big, we're talking a big dump truck that would clear, one path would clear the whole road.
Okay, so do we, is there a range on this price at all that would satisfy you or is this like the minimum that you would see?
So that, that price right there gets the truck with the swap loader and it gets the container that would hold the material in the back of the truck. Then we could, like I told you, with that price, that makes that truck with the ability to, to be a Swiss Army, you can put a catch basin cleaner and now I'm remembering why it has eminent life. So on that request, it did have that box checked for imminent threat to health, safety of citizens.
Yeah.
That was because of the use of the, that would take over the use of the clam shovel truck, which is right now only used in emergency situations because of its condition. So the truck that cleans the catch basins...
Oh, that, okay, I've seen that.
That truck would also replace that truck.
Okay.
So that's why it has eminent life of health, safety of citizens, employee, property, because that truck is on, it's really unsafe vehicle to use.
Right, but from what we're looking at here, it's like these trucks after 10 years are rusting apart even though they don't, I mean, that's a lot of money to spend.
Absolutely.
If it's gonna rust apart in 10 years, right? That's a lot, is that the going rate now?
Well, like I said, that's why both of those trucks were put on for this year, but the one, the Ford truck is in more need of replacement, it's, it's in that older, I think that's a 2005, that, that one ton.
The first truck you spoke of.
The first truck I spoke of is in, is in worse condition. I put them both on for this year, but one is more for a three to five year, that bigger truck is for a three-year.
Okay.
If you see it on there, it does say, I think it says both.
So you might not, this might not go to town meeting this year is what we're saying.
Correct.
The 240,000 is not imminent for this year.
But the other one is.
The other one is.
Yep, the one ton.
Right, so then this, maybe this is something to grants or something to help.
Yep.
These kind of price tags are so difficult for us to fit into the budget and I know you need it, but...
But like I did say, that, the 2015 Peterbilt, I didn't have the numbers at the time, but that was, that truck was 100, almost 170,000 that we just bought two years ago or three, when did that? That went into service in 2015, so four years, almost five years ago now, that truck. So five years ago, that truck was 170,000 and that's where your, you know, the disparity from 85 in 15 years.
Yeah.
It's, you know what I'm saying, it's 100, it's, it's nearly 60, 70,000 dollars more.
Also, it's not the same, it's not the same truck.
It's not the same truck.
No, it's...
It's doing, it's doing the clam shovel.
It's doing a lot of other things too.
It's, it's a more expensive truck than an actual dump truck setup.
The swap loader, to have that ability alone is about 70,000 dollars, that's an add-on to the price of the vehicle.
Okay, well, that makes more sense to me, thank you for that.
Also, do I have any?
Yeah, just a couple of questions here. Looking at the list of your equipment, looking at the 2000 Caterpillar Baco, OOS I mentioned stands for out of service?
Yes.
And is that going to be out of service for long? I don't...
It's out of service...
It's now 20 years old.
Because of the fact that it's, it's good money after bad now, it's not worth fixing. I was looking into working with our new water and sewer superintendent and trading that Baco in against purchasing a new Baco as a joint effort between me and Colin Stokes, we're kinda collaborating a way to do that.
Okay, that led to my next question, are you expecting to purchase a Baco in the next five years because it looks like you need one?
Yes, we absolutely need one, but it's, once again, the expenses and the needs and just thought it was too much to put on.
So maybe through a joint purchase, you can both save some money.
It'll be a joint purchase, and we will use that, that Baco as a trade-in because even though it's, it needs a lot of work and, you know, it's old, but it, you're still, you'd be surprised how much you get for a piece of equipment like that as a trade-in, you might still get 10,000 or 8,000 dollars for it, potentially.
Right. I don't know, Mr. Chair, it just seems to me that with such low mileage, we ought to take, somehow find a way to take better care of the trucks, maybe a cheap steel building to house them in.
We have a building, we have a good facility over there, we have a, they moved the building from the old highway up there, that, I don't think it's, I don't think it's because you're in the salt and what have you.
We do keep a lot of the, we keep a lot of the tree, we keep a lot of the tree equipment and, you know, the stuff that gets used in an emergency base situation where you can, you know, you don't have to clear the snow. As far as the, in the wintertime, we keep two of the big trucks in the heated garage, we keep one of the other big trucks in that open barn that's not heated, that, the old facility that we moved, but you just, we just don't have the ability to constantly, you know, have those vehicles in those spaces, they're kinda multi-used areas right now, unfortunately, so...
Mike, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing additional, no.
Okay, so Rennie, so, me being me, go get the dummy. That Peterbilt that went on the road, it took about a year to get on the road, you weren't here, but it took almost a year to get on the road.
Yep.
It was really 13 years old, but let's just say it's 14.
Yep.
That's 12,000 dollars a year that truck cost the town of Groveland to have here, okay? That's just, that costs us 12 grand a year, right? That truck, in my eyes, should be a 20 to 25-year-old vehicle on the road, possibly 30. You're not gonna get 30 out of it because it's in the salt, it's the first truck out the door, it's the first truck in the salt, and I get it.
Yep.
I know for a fact Bill Green takes 100% care of those trucks, I, I know...
Oh yeah, he's constantly fluid film, I mean, he does all the preventive maintenance.
I know out of my mind, the equipment has been taken care of and what have you.
Absolutely.
I just can't believe that in 13 years that we need a new vehicle, I just can't, I just, I mean...
Well, like I said, there's definitely a costly restoration that can go, that can extend the life of that truck.
What do you, roughly, top of your head?
In between 15 and 20,000 dollars, just eyeballing it and going over it with, with Bill.
Yep.
You know, who knows?
Right.
A lot of, he's done these types of restorations.
Yep.
You know, we've even talked about renting equipment and having him doing it, but it's just the time and the, you know what I mean, he has the ability, but...
Right, right.
Being a foreman and the mechanic at the same time, he's constantly needed in the field.
Yep.
As well as when we have repairs.
So where I was going with this was, I know that you have the MS4 cleaning, catch basin cleaning permit that you have to keep up with.
Yep.
And I know the truck that you were talking about, I've seen it, I know they got it used, it was a Band-Aid, I know in the beginning when they got it, it was more convenient, was just trying to stop a subcontractor from coming in and doing the work to save money. I get it. I understand you need that truck, are you gonna sub it out to someone and they're gonna come in and do the work?
Very costly for the town.
I get it, I get it.
I have other ways to mitigate that possibly.
All I'm telling you is, me personally, get what you need most important, because like I think Ms. Capson Ellis said, we, we're not gonna have all the money to do all of it.
Of course not.
We're not.
Of course not.
So if you think the Baco's most important, talk to the water department and if you think the saw truck is, whatever you think is most important, I don't think we're gonna be, maybe I'm wrong, finance truck is over there, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to fund all this, I mean...
No, of course not.
And you need tools to work with, I get it, I'm not here trying to cut you, but...
But we have to pick away, we have to get vigilant on, on starting...
Right, I get it.
The process, we have a lot of aging equipment, so...
Where I'm gonna leave with this is, that Peterbilt, if you threw 10 grand into that Peterbilt, 15 grand, it's a lot cheaper than 240.
Absolutely.
We're still not getting the truck, we really, the saw truck that we need or whatever. If you put 12 grand into that, is there a truck, when the time comes to do the manholes, we can lease one or is that stupid? Let's say we leased it for a month or two, is this, but probably not.
I have other avenues that I'm looking at right now.
Okay.
Working collaboratively with Georgetown and potentially Topsfield, who just purchased a new clam shovel truck, to working a deal with them regionally. We were, part of my capital and my budget is to get a sweeper, which I know, everybody here knows about me trying to get a sweeper for the town. We spend the money to sweep the town once a year, it's almost the cost of purchasing a sweeper if we had it in the lease. It's kind of a no-brainer, I've worked with Peter Durkey in Georgetown to, to really get this to fruition and get us a new sweeper. We have the funds, we have the ability and working with Topsfield, they'll be the third party, they have a brand-new, the workings is that we take our funds, get the sweeper, and then we take the sweeper and use it in a, in all three towns and then we also have the ability to use their clam shovel truck.
Right.
This is all still in the workings and we don't know exactly how to make everything, you know, work as a, as a team, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna nail it down pretty soon.
Okay.
So, that's my global plan.
Yep. Does anyone have anything else? Go ahead.
I was just gonna thank you though for, for getting all this information available to us, I mean, I'm sure this was not easy, but this is the first time I've seen like such comprehensive information as to all the equipment and it's probably confused me a little bit tonight, but it's still really good to see the list and then to connect it to the request and to start to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish here. So thank you for doing all this form work and giving us all this information, I do appreciate the time that it must have taken you to do that.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question, what's the Toyota Tundra that you got here?
That was, because of the, the lack of usable vehicles, I think that was something Mr. Eric Alien purchased. It's only two-wheel drive, so it's, it's used limitedly in the wintertime, but we use it for pot, they use, honestly, Bill and Mark and the rest of the guys, they use that truck pretty religiously for just about everything, so, but yeah, it's a, it's a, it's just a pickup, two-wheel drive pickup that we got. We did purchase relatively cheaply and I think Bill put a new motor in it like a couple months after we bought it, for whatever reason, the motor was, was in failing.
Oh, oh yeah, yeah.
So we put a new motor in it, which was used, but, yeah.
I imagine either one of you could ask, answer this question based on your expertise. If we were gonna do as you suggested and throw 15,000 dollars into that Peterbilt, how long do you estimate that would extend the useful life of the vehicle? Two years, three years, five years, 10 years?
Oh no, if you spend 15, 20,000 dollars on redoing the frame and the body, you could potentially get, you know, five to seven more years out of that truck.
Right.
Okay.
So I mean, cost effectiveness is the, I mean, that's, that's an alternative.
That's it, thank you.
All right, any, anything else we need to go over?
Yeah.
That's it. All right, well, thank you for coming in and...
Oh, the sweeper.
Oh yeah, the sweeper.
Oh, the sweeper.
Oh yeah.
We like the sweeper.
How much does the car, how much does it cost us to lease the sweeper now for once a year?
So we, we pay, we outsource sweeping once a year, I spent about, out of my budget, it was a little over 17,000 this year and Peter Durkey spends about the same amount if we leased the sweeper, brand-new, creme de la creme, be about, I think it was little over 35, 34, something like that, a year, 34,000 a year. That was last year's numbers, so that number might need to be tweaked a little bit, I've been working with CN Wood on pricing for that.
So if we were to do that, what would your goal be? Would it be to do it two times a year, four times a year, six times a year?
Certainly, obviously in the springtime, then in the fall, when we have leaves, you know, you've seen the flooding that goes on down on Main Street and, you know, various places, so it would definitely help with that, we wouldn't have to be running in emergency situations as much, but yeah, at least twice a year, minimum, that's kind of what we're required to do by the MS4 permitting, but we, we only, obviously, we only do it once a year right now.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Well, just, so you put in for 15,000 dollars for the sweeper, right?
Yep.
So if that is approved, would the, your budget would go down by the amount that you're paying?
It wouldn't go down because I pay that every year anyways, it comes out of my budget to pay the contractor, so it would come out of my budget, but it would be...
For this?
Yeah.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, it's a wash.
Correct, it's a wash.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, okay.
Then it's even more than that, that was an estimation on before I actually paid for sweeping, so...
Right, so right now, the money to con, to pay the person that comes in is in your operating budget.
Correct.
And it's about this amount, a little bit more maybe.
Roughly.
Good, thanks.
I know, I know you have a paving machine that was donated and so you're, you're gonna be doing some paving with that.
Oh yeah.
So with the sweeper, instead of hiring somebody to come in and sweep that...
Exactly.
You're gonna be able to do it yourself.
And even when we did, like when we did the road paving, that was another expense I, the other 1,500 dollars that came up was because every time we grind a road before we pave it, you have to sweep it to get a clean surface for the liquid asphalt and the asphalt to be applied. So we have to, I have to have a contract to come in, I think it's a minimum of four hours, 125 dollars an hour, you can do the math, it's 500 bucks every time he comes in.
So in addition to sweeping it, the contract, would you say 15, 17,000 a year?
Yep.
You're gonna be able to do it a couple times a year.
Absolutely.
And you're gonna be able to, instead of hiring somebody to be doing some paving, you're gonna be able to do it yourself, it makes sense.
Absolutely, right.
Hey, you said it was 34,000 a year to lease it?
Well, that was, this, we had a used machine, we had a new machine, it seems, I personally am not a big fan of used sweeping equipment because it, their, their, their maintenance is far outweighs, I mean, they constantly need maintenance and if you don't do the maintenance on those vehicles properly and, and on schedule, the wear and tear on them is exponential. So I'm not a big fan of used vehicles, used sweeping equipment, but even the used ones, when they go through them and recondition them, it's nearly the cost of a brand-new one, so I was...
What's the cost of a brand-new one?
That...
34?
About 34,000, that's the lease, is 34,000 a year, they're brand-new, they're about 220 and some change.
Brand-new.
Yeah, it's brand-new, 200, but for half that price, the way they put the lease out there, it's still nearly the same, you lease it for the same amount of money, a used one versus a new one, the first three years is still 33, 32,000 and you have a used piece of equipment. So I was looking at a used one thinking we could save some money, but it really doesn't save us anything until the last two, three years of the, of the lease.
What's the longevity of those machines?
Um, in big cities, I've seen them go seven, eight years, 10 years even, so I think for us in, in...
10-plus years.
At least, I, like I said, the use won't be there, they're not, it's not gonna go every single day like they do in cities.
Right.
Just to cover the mileage, it has to go out every day, so I see it lasting, you know, and obviously maintenance and, you know, having one person drive it, you know, be a big, there'll be a lot of reasons why we can extend the life of that vehicle.
I don't know, you can probably check into it down the road, I know you weren't here. I could've sworn one year, maybe Denise would remember, one year, didn't we lease one of those and then Georgetown leased it right after we leased it or something, wasn't it when Bob was doing that? They leased it for like three weeks and then when their lease was up, we took it over for three weeks and our guys drove it for one year?
On a sweeper?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Was it a sidewalk?
No, it was a sweeper, I think, I thought they were leasing, we had a deal where I think Georgetown was leasing one for a period of time.
Yeah.
And then we leased it right after they did, but I know it hasn't been done that way, at least this last year wasn't, and the year before, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I've looked into them, although the leases are leased to own that I've looked at, I haven't, I haven't really gone down that avenue of, of, you know, leasing it just for a couple months.
Anyway, is everyone all set? Okay, well, thank you for coming in and...
Excellent, thank you guys.
Okay, so moving on with our list, we flipped the page over and we are on to the cable contract budget and business plan update. So I know the last meeting that we met, you guys asked me to call and speak with town council on the 10-year contract versus a five-year, and I hadn't seen anything this morning, so I left a message with Bill Hewig to get you guys out the letter as soon as he could, and I think he got it out in time, hopefully that you could read it, and when I did talk to him earlier on after our last meeting, he basically said to me that it's the way the business is, you gotta go, really gotta go for 10-year versus a five-years, and I said, listen, could you put it on paper and send it off to the board members, let them all read it and have it? And that's what he was saying is the...
Yeah, his points made sense, with everything that he laid out.
Yep.
It made sense to try to go for 10-year.
Right, and what he was telling me is, we're gonna go further than we can possibly go for, make sure we get it all down, get it all listed, what we're looking for, have your hearing, which we did, and now we will sit down, put all our points together, and I think we should send him in and let him negotiate, he's negotiated in for many a towns and I think he'd be the right guy to negotiate. Based on what we, what we come up with to give him.
Perfect.
What we give him.
Works for me.
And one of my questions was, you know, his time, it's gonna cost us some money to have him do this, but I would hopefully think that it would be somebody in the cable to do that.
Yes, that would come out of the cable money.
Okay. Okay, now, moving on, I know Denise has done some work.
Yep.
And Kathy was working with Denise on it as well.
Kathy met with Denise, Denise did the work.
Okay.
And I cannot take credit for this document, but I think Denise did a really nice job at defining our town and what the plan is about, and, you know, what you see attached is just the same information that we had as a summary, but now spread out over the 10 years of the contract as far as the cost of the cable technicians and operators, selecting lots and asked for the rent and utilities and Denise said that was a good idea, put that in, and then the capital costs are based on the sheet that we provided by our, our cable consultant, Chris, that, you know, large document, then broken down over the 10 years, the replacement cost for the various pieces of equipment, it ties back to this spreadsheet, yes. So, you know, all that we need really to add to this, I think, is the information from tonight's hearing.
That's it.
Right?
And that paperwork that Denise and you put together and...
Denise put together, I don't wanna take, this is a really nice...
All right, I'm sorry, so Denise put together and we need to get that over to Bill?
Yes.
We need to sit, I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
We need to sit down as a board and discuss what we're looking for.
Yep.
That's what we need to do next, we need to discuss what we need to do and now hand that piece of paper, document, over to Bill and Bill will take care of it from there. If he can, he will, he can't promise anything.
Right, so what I would recommend is, I can update the draft business plan with the points that were stated tonight, and then at the next meeting, again, there was only those few bulleted items in the existing contract that we can really negotiate, so the board should plan to vote on some of those and what you'd like to put forward to Bill Hewig for then him to take the business plan and the recommendations to negotiate. And I think based on, based on the 10-year budget estimate and the, I mean, I broke it down, you can see what would come from the franchise fee, so currently, we're paying the salaries out of the franchise fee and I would say the same would come from the, rent and utilities would come out of the franchise fee.
Okay.
And then the capital costs would be the true capital and that's all the equipment replacement. So the franchise fee, I don't think we would go any lower, obviously, it would either be the same percentage or more in the new contract, it's really a matter of the capital support costs that they're gonna give us, whether it's a percentage or a flat fee that we can negotiate from them.
Right, and when I had talked to Bill, he was saying to, if you want, nothing, no reason we can't try.
Yep.
But a lot of times, they're gonna kick back and say, this is it.
Right, but I think if we have, now that we have the equipment list and the replacement schedule and a budget.
Right, right.
We can justify why we're looking for what we're looking for.
Exactly, right.
So, so my only question would be, should we be going for a percentage given in light of the attorney's letter as far as their market share or should be going for as far as the, what was the name of the fee you called?
The franchise fee is a percentage.
Right, so that can't be a flat amount?
I don't think we'd want that, that's per subscriber, so that's a percentage on each bill.
I'm referring to whether we need to get at least, it looks like 70,000 dollars in the first year and then going forward in order to support the operations of our cable, our public access television, else we wouldn't have the money to pay for the people we need to run it. Right, I mean, and that would be the end of our public access, so on the percentage we're on now, how much are we taking in a year?
Um, we receive, I wanna say, I think we get 25,000 dollars. I don't know if it's a quarter, it's three times a year.
I think it's a quarter.
I thought it was a quarter too.
Um, I can pull that up while we're...
Quarter would be good, that would make us not...
It might be per quarter, but I think one of them comes in later, if I recall.
Okay.
But keep in mind, there is still funds in the existing that would carry you forward.
A little bit, aren't there, but, you know...
We might as well get what we can get and, and over the 10-year period.
Yes.
And, and do the sliding scale, I call it, it's not really, but you know what I'm saying?
Right, so you'll see...
Let's see what we can get, and then if they push back, they push back, I mean, nothing wrong with trying, I mean...
Right, so with the salaries, I just did a 2% increase, obviously, the cable, camera technician is an estimate based on if we hire somebody, when we hire somebody, how many people, what we have them film, but those I just did a 2% so that we had an increase in cost, and with the rent and utilities, I sort of varied year to year what percentage I went up based on, you know, a number of factors.
Mm-hmm.
But as the utility costs increase, so should the cost that we're assessing to the cable access.
Right.
You know, heating, electricity, cable, I mean, internet access, I mean, in town hall, they're using our internet, they're using our infrastructure, the space here.
Yep, yep.
So, I mean, those sort of are on an incremental scale. The equipment costs, I took the schedule that we were provided by Chris and manipulated it as best I could, some of them really didn't have a useful life, there was not very good replacement costs on some of them, so I did what I could, I sorted it and sort of lumped So I did what I could, I sorted it, and sort of lumped them into ten-year increments so that you can see which ones would be replaced each year. Um, some of what he had for years remaining didn't match the condition that it was in. Um, but I took his, I didn't change any of the conditions he listed and just sort of did what I could with what we received, so... I think it's a good start.
Do you think these numbers are good at the end of ten years, you think we'll be fine?
At the end of ten years, I think, if, but it depends on what we get from Comcast.
Right, and we don't know what's gonna happen for another ten years, unfortunately, we don't, but as long as we build in as best we know and the best we can do, then...
Right, and, and it may be that some of that equipment is not replaced...
Right.
Year after year. I mean, we don't replace, I mean, we replace some things, but we don't replace equipment every year, some of these things. I mean, and some of them are minimal, that, you know, monitors, well, you don't really need to replace monitors all that often.
Right.
So I think, I think we would be fine.
We'll have money in a nest egg.
I think so. Or to allocate to other areas of, like I put in there, um, you'll see that we've talked about it for years, putting cameras in the library for filming. Um, ideally, that would be if and when we could expand, um, and connect the buildings with fiber, 'cause then you don't need a whole entire setup. You could have one main frame here, and someone could sit here and operate the cameras in the library and control it, and so you wouldn't need a whole setup in there, just really the cameras and the infrastructure. Again, it's all gonna depend on what Comcast is willing to give us at the end of the day.
Okay.
So if anyone has questions or comments or suggestions on the drafts that I gave you...
I discussed them, yes.
Um, otherwise, I can update it and give you another draft at the next meeting.
I think I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there were some things in the, um, in the contract, I didn't bring it with me, that, uh, I'd just like to see added, so we'll get those to Denise and, uh, she can get those off to Bill Hewig.
Some of, some of the, um, I'm not really knowledgeable about this stuff as much, but the people in the audience that were talking about, like, um, Mike was talking to them as far as the billing and breaking it up, we can't negotiate that in this.
No, but we can put it in there, um, you know, we can put in our business plan that we would like to see that.
Maybe, I was thinking of doing a page of concerns or...
That's part of their not meeting their requirements from previous contracts.
Right, so I was thinking if we get a couple of letters or a page saying that we did have the, the hearing, and this is the concerns of the people.
Right.
If we can at least let it be heard and let Bill say it to them.
Right, well, I think, again, we'll put, if, if it's a priority of the board to ask them to at least look at à la carte, or to look at...
I agree.
More or less disparaging billing across the board. I mean, there's things like that we can put in the business plan, everything in the business plan. You'll see, I put in the, the reduced or free costs for basic cable for low income or, um, our seniors. We could just put it in as another item like that.
Sure.
And then Bill can take all of this and say, you know, this, these are what's important to the town.
Right.
That's why I think at the next meeting, I can identify, again, the few sections of the contract that talk about money. And then you should be prepared to vote on sort of those and vote on a plan that we can then give him and say...
Right.
Here you go, take this and see what you can do with it.
But one thing that he kinda, kinda talked to me a little bit about is, he said, unfortunately, they're your only carrier. And you can tell them, Bill, he said, you can tell them whatever you want over ten years, and guess what? They know they're in the driver's seat of this whole thing, and they're gonna push back, so expect it. And I said, no, I know, I think the board knows that, but they're gonna push back, and they're gonna, they're gonna give you as minimal as you possibly they can get away with.
Well, you can always ask for something, they're gonna turn it down. Like, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see put in there, within five years, uh, start to, uh, wire the town for fiber optics. They're, they're not gonna do it, but they might say, well, we, we can't, obviously, we can't give you this, but we'll give you something else.
Whatever. So maybe for the next meeting, everyone can bring their thoughts in, or what they want?
Well, we wanna be able to vote, so I thought we wanted Denise to put tonight's hearing into here.
Oh yeah, definitely do that part of it, but, I mean, does anyone wanna do it now? It's fine with me, do it, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
I think we oughta be able to look at it at three.
It's a part of the meeting, but we're not ready to vote.
Right. That's the business plan, it's not about the...
We need to get this off.
Get this, the capital.
That's the capital equipment replacement, capital equipment replacement. Well, I'm talking about the concerns that we heard from the people, that's what I'm talking about. Do you wanna compa, compile a list?
I will just put it in the narrative in the document.
Okay, alright. And Kathy? Just tell Denise whatever it is and you want.
Yeah, well, she said, what she's gonna do is edit this, this is what they...
Right, no, I, I get it, but I'm just saying...
So if there's anything else you want in the narrative, like, what did you just say a few minutes ago? You said...
Fiber optics.
Fiber optic within five years. And there was, there was another thing that was brought up at the, uh, advisory board meeting by, by Rob, that there's nothing in the contract that if you, if you move a building through the streets, as far as, that Comcast would be, uh, bearing the cost of lowering the wires so that they can move it through like they do for the electric company and, and the telephone. So that might be something that needs to be added in there, that, uh, not that we do it that often, I think it's been thirty years since we moved a building, but Comcast should be responsible, I mean, maybe, and maybe under the FCC regulations, they are, I don't know. But it, it's not in the contract, and, and it was brought up at a meeting that, that might, uh, one might wanna add something like that in there.
One of the other, one of the other things is, can we put anything in there about the, the amount that the cable is down here in the breakdowns and all that? I mean, is that getting nitty-picky, you think, or maybe they have to have it respond time within twenty-four hours, I don't know?
We certainly can, um...
I mean, if you think it's nitty-picky, then we're getting nitty-picky. I mean, what do you guys think, Mike?
Uh, I think they have all that data anyways.
Okay.
You know, whether or not we bring it to forefront, that...
Alright.
It's just something that is important to us, they have that information regardless of we put it up and on.
Right. But, you know, in the last few years, they, they closed the office in Haverhill and sent everything to Methuen. And they, now recently, they closed the office in Newburyport, and you're either gonna use Seabrook or Methuen. So they're, they're cutting back on employees, but they're not giving, they're not giving us any break. So, uh, any of our people that wanna pay the bill in person, or have a question, or have to return equipment, they gotta go to Methuen, or they have to go to Seabrook.
I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, but I think they wanna phase out of this area. That's kinda what I heard, but...
Could be.
Everything's going streaming anyway.
Exactly, and that's what they know it.
That's why I might be hesitant to take any kind of percentage-based revenue, um, because I see in the next ten years, this, subscriptions going down.
He said the next five years, you're gonna see big changes.
You're gonna see huge changes, because as Selectman Woods pointed out a number of times, the young generation, they stream, they don't watch TV. I see it now, my, my kids are on Netflix and they're on, uh, Google or whatever, YouTube, but they don't watch network TV, cable TV, much anymore. Um, so, and to Bill Hewig's point, don't be surprised within ten years if they say, hey, we want out of this business because there's no money making.
Well, I mean, I don't know if we can go for something that's not a percentage when it comes to the fees, but, um, certainly it can be brought up that we're concerned about having it.
For the capital weekend, we did, we did, that was in the last ten-year contract.
Well, that was a different fee. The, the franchise fee is one thing, it's like a certain percent from zero to what, six or something, it's a limit. And then there was the flat capital payments. Um, but I guess, you know, I think we're gonna talk about the unbundled services, but I think it'd be alright to put in the, in the dialogue that, um, we had Elizabeth Rose complained about outages.
Right.
And do residents should get at least a prorated bill. If they don't have service for a certain number of days in a month or something, they should at least get a, see a reduction in their monthly bill. I mean, at the very least, you know, and I don't know if they do that, if that's not in the contract.
They typically do, but you have to call them.
You have to call.
If you call them and say, my service was down from this day to this day, or this hour, this hour, they will prorate your contract, but they will not do it if you do not call, because I don't think they know specifically which customers are out and which are not.
Right, so even if you call support, so I have Comcast at my house, I called four times over two months, 'cause my on-demand wasn't working. So they had a log of it, every time I called, they knew exactly when I called. I had to call the billing department in order for them to then go on and say, oh, we'll adjust your bill and prorate it. Support won't have, you have to call billing specifically in order to have those adjustments done.
But they will do it.
They will do it.
There's no way we could put like a, a button or a tab on our town website that people could put in their information, and then that could be forwarded to them? And, I mean, 'cause this is a habit of calling people and wait on hold, that's ridiculous when you're paying for a service.
Yeah, but do we wanna be that kind of intermediary for all the citizens?
I'm just saying, they have, the email goes right to them, tells them what days and...
Somebody still has to, uh, be the administrator for that work.
You have to call, you can't do it online, you can't do it, I, I tried, you have to call their billing department.
As far as our, I don't even know a lot about it, the infrastructure, the infrastructure for the, not, I don't mean the equipment in our building, but outside in the town. Is there any major that we wanna make sure in the next ten years, it's up, what, up to stop or keeps up to stop? Can we talk about that, Mike?
No, I mean, I think we need to look at, you know, how often we're having issues that are truly Comcast-related. And that's, but I don't know if it's here, I don't know where the D-mark is located. I think that's really the issue, is if it's really Comcast, it's continually going down, where is it, what is it, and why isn't it fixed?
Right, so is that an infrastructure, that's what I'm talking about, is that infrastructure outside?
But I don't even know if it's in Groveland, I don't even know where that is.
Oh, 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 it could be someplace else, I got you, okay, alright.
But I think we need to, we should address that, and I can put that as one of the points, that, um, you know, our local cable channels are down often.
Right, okay.
What the issues are, I don't know when they're down, but...
Right, alright. Anyone have anything else? Bill, Mike, I'll say, everyone? So we're good, we're good with the subject for now? Okay, so we're gonna move on to finance director's time.
Uh, and I'm gonna keep it short, 'cause I can't really speak. Um, so I wanted to, um, just thank everybody for when I was out. Um, a huge thanks to Ellen and Caitlin for, um, keeping the office under control and handling things in my absence. Um, Debbie Webster was a big help printing the tax bills for me. Um, all the employees, committee members, and residents that reached out during my recovery, I really appreciate it. Um, and to Mike, Bill, Bill and Kathy, your emails and texts and phone calls were really appreciated, um, to check in on me. Um, and then just lastly, the union negotiations are coming up, all of our union contracts are expiring. My plan was to proceed as we had done the last time, that I would meet with the unions and then negotiate for a while, and then bring the proposals to you all during a, an executive session. Does that still work for you? Is that still okay to proceed that way?
Yeah.
Your job.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure before I started scheduling those, so...
Oh, I know, it's efficient, that's what I mean, it's your job.
Yeah, and it worked out well last time, I think, um, there weren't a lot of issues. We did negotiate quite a bit with some of the unions, but it went pretty smoothly, so, um, I will start setting those up, and we'll have some executive sessions over the next few months, um, for those, and that is all they have.
Okay. Starting with Selectman's time with Kathy?
Um, I don't have any overriding concerns, I did receive, um, some emails or calls regarding the increase to the water rate that was spoken of on camera, and I did watch it, but I didn't actually see a vote to increase the rates, I didn't know... I know it is their authority, um, it just seems like a pretty significant jump, and it, I wasn't aware that that was being contemplated this year. And I guess I'm wondering if we can kind of start to have some meetings with the water and sewer board to maybe discuss having that kind of discussion about rate increases at the same time budgets are being submitted, so that there can be a little more transparency in the budget and revenue side of things.
I agree.
Like where that twenty percent is going?
Mm-hmm.
Be nice to know.
So, okay.
Guys, so I did reach out, um, I did send a call and an email, but it was late this afternoon, looking for some information. I will tell you, much as I suspected, the reason they're increasing the rates, um, this fiscal year is because they have not met budget the last few years. They are not collecting enough money to make their budget. That's why they needed to go up to ten percent this year, and then to go up next year to continue to cover their budgetary funds. Um, I did ask for all of the documents that went into setting the rates, and I did watch the, I think it was all of three minutes and thirty seconds, the public meeting. I did watch it again myself, and no, they did not take a vote publicly, so I've asked if they took a vote, when they took a vote, and where it was documented, 'cause they may have adjourned back to their closed, or public but non-televise meeting.
They closed that meeting, I watched it.
No, but they had another meeting posted at the same time. So they may have gone back to their office and taken a vote, I have asked for that documentation. So I will forward it all to you, um, when I get that.
Okay, so, um, it's only fair to let the town people understand, if they're not meeting their budget, they should explain why they're not meeting the budget. So I would like to ask if we could have them come in, or to, whatever we can get them in, if we can have a, you know, conversation with them, to ask them... I mean, I think we owe it to the people to understand, and they trying to sell this, if, if they really need it, I think it would help them try to sell it if they really need it. But I mean, I don't think doing a twenty percent increase and not really giving the taxpayers a good explanation, I, I don't think it makes sense.
I, I'm sure part of their answer's gonna be that no one showed up to the public hearing. So it was advertised, they did hold it in this meeting and televised it, and no one showed up.
It was a week before Christmas.
So, I mean, I...
I can ask them, I mean, you know...
I guess what I'm looking at...
Well, I'm only one person, so if, if you guys don't agree with that...
Well, I totally agree with it.
I totally agree with it.
Because I know from the budget process, we're meeting with them year after year, we go over their budget, and I guess we've always assumed that the budget that the finance committee's presented is supported by the revenue stream, I mean, it's...
Right, no.
We have assumed that, and I, I look back through the capital summary that I did over the last ten, ten years, and the only things they seem to use the retained earnings for were the work on the, um, pipes and the work on their new building. So I wasn't aware that they were running short of funds. I mean, they transferred between the special tunneling a little, but it's not from retained earnings, is it? So I would think they, they are making their budget, I, I guess I'm very confused.
Okay, Ed, you wanna say something?
Yeah, it might be nice to know if, uh, if water consumption is down, which would, would, uh, 'cause they're not meeting the budget, which, water consumption is down, then the sewage would be down, uh, and, uh, it, it shouldn't be, but, uh, maybe people are cutting back what a bit.
Right.
I believe the last time, they were not using the assumption that everybody paid on the discount in their budget projections.
What, what, try that one again?
So in the past, their budget was not being set based, so they should be setting their budget based on every...
Lowest rate that they can get.
Every customer paying with the discount, and they were not doing that. And more and more people were paying, so they've actually eliminated the discounts on everything except for the minimum level as well. Um, but that was part of the problem in the past, is they were not budgeting based on that discount.
I mean, I, I definitely think that it's, it's a good conversation if they, we can get them in. I also think it's a good conversation that we talk about the building, it's gone on now. I know they were talking about going in this winter and doing some work on the interior, I know the windows got put in, like, we talked to Colin, he got the windows in. Well, why don't we just have a conversation? 'Cause I know before, things went on with this board, and they said we weren't inviting them in, and we said things we shouldn't have said, so let's have them in. I mean, I think it's a good thing to have them in, and, and I don't think it's, we're not being negative toward them, we're just trying to get the information, that's all. It could be perfectly fine, and then people in the town are gonna understand it, they're gonna hear it, so, um...
I will extend an invitation.
So, I guess, Kathy, was that it for you?
That's all, yep.
Okay, Ed?
Oh, I don't have anything.
Um, I don't have anything, I'm gonna pass for tonight, Bill?
Uh, real quickly, um, Denise, it's great to have you back.
Thank you.
Healthy, uh, always a pleasure. Well...
Eventually, eventually I'll be healthy.
For the most part. Uh, real quickly, um, we haven't had a, I think I covered the last building committee we had at the last Selectman's meeting. We won't have another one for another couple of weeks. Um, do wanna give a shameless plug out there to Veezy Park, had my daughter's baby shower there yesterday, a great place. If, uh, folks, if you're looking for a great value in town, to have a nice gathering of people under a hundred people, Veezy Park, you oughta check it out, it's great value, you'll love it.
Okay.
I'm good?
Okay, Mike?
Um, other than just the meeting with, um, Sensitire and State EPA next Tuesday, which I think I can make it to, that's the only thing I have for an update on it.
Okay.
Regarding Washington Street, sorry.
Yeah. Um, alright, hold on, finished business, starting with Mike, see when we finish up there? Nope. Bill?
None at this time, sir.
And, nope. And Ed?
Uh, I don't have anything, no.
And Kathy?
No.
Okay, moving on. Uh, other ideas not responsibly anticipated at the time of posting, Kathy? Ed? No, no. Bill?
Uh, no.
And Mike? No. And we have a correspondence from eighteen Hillview Drive, drain is issued. Yep. I did speak to that person already, they called me, so I kinda know about it, and I did...
Yeah, I believe she emailed the board.
Yeah.
Um, but after speaking with Kathy, um, Kathy just asked that I put it as correspondence, just in case someone didn't receive her.
I did, with the road commissioner on it, a super, and it, he said it's supposed to be first thing in the spring, so, but, um, item, so... Yep, alright, so we have enjoyment at nine...
Motion to adjourn at eight forty-four.
Seven. Uh, any further discussion on that? And all of that? Yep, okay.
Oh!
I know.
Yes.